I just want to go.
I don't look like you're walking by the porch.
Called meeting, order. Mr. Richardson, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Sure. Father God in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful, beautiful day that you've given us today. We thank you for the time that you've allowed us to come together as the city of Montevista and the council. Father, we ask for your enlightenment. We ask for your direction. We ask, Father, that you will have your perfect will with us tonight.
Amen. Full call.
Nita.
Counselor Foster.
Present.
Counselor Locke.
Here.
Counselor Loren.
Here.
Mayor Pratim Segola.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
A coroner, Ms. DeClare.
Any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, sir. There are two modifications to the agenda. We would like to add SL seven, S L D Federal Bank Automated Clearing House Origination Agreement. And remove G one B. Question on C D C H E.
Would move to approve the modifications to the agenda.
Second.
It moved and seconded to approve the modifications to the agenda. Is there any discussion? Nita.
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Loren.
Aye.
Mayor Pratim Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Question carries to modify the agenda.
Pay approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting, January sixth, twenty twenty-two, special meeting, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and review and approval of accounts payable.
Move to approve the minutes of regular meeting of January sixth, the special meeting of January thirteenth, and the accounts payable.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for minutes of regular meeting, January sixth, twenty twenty-two, special meeting, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Nita.
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Loren.
Aye.
Mayor Pratim.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Proclamations, communications, and appointments. Jim, how are you?
Well, yourself, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning.
Good evening, council. This evening, I wanted to formally introduce our new IT technician, Brandon Dos. He's joined our team per our IGA. He will be full-time here very shortly in Montevista. Right now, he's pretty much full-time at sky high. So, Mr. Dos here is a resident of Montevista. He was an intern with the Boys and Girls Club and then an intern with the City of Alamosa this summer. He has his IT fundamentals certification, and he's been with us for about three weeks now. But, well, I'd like to just say, I hope everyone's having a good night, and as it does, thank everyone for the opportunity it is to work here at Montevista. It's been fun working with the guys for the last three weeks and over the summer, working with them for the internship, but also very insightful on how the city's worked, and I'm just glad to be back.
Welcome and happy back.
Definitely, welcome. Especially since how you were going under the building and you still came back. I'm proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Christian.
You gonna get to give reports like Christian does?
Hopefully. I'm not sure about that one.
We're just getting him broke in.
I keep having that one off Christian.
Citizen comments and special presentations, scheduled appearances, in order to be included on this portion of the agenda, you have to file appropriate paperwork with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. First discussion will be for the new planning and zoning members? Or do that?
So, good afternoon, evening, council, and Mr. Mayor. So, we have. Article ten, section two dash ten. Five members on.
Think that's, I like the idea of going back to five. Lot to do with that on the zoning.
That's, we don't need a vote or do we need a, we need a vote? I would make a motion to change the planning and zoning members from two to five.
It was.
I'd ask, uh, three to five members.
Second.
Moved and seconded to put it out for the Planning and Zoning Commission to get from, go from the three to five members. Question?
Does that mean we no longer meet planning and zoning until we get five, or are they going to meet if they fill the one vacancy at three? Wait and try and get the other two in?
We will. Either. And. But. They would be more. All decide, solicit. I have questions for them to. Very optimistic. Their interest. Okay.
So this is only for citizens within the city of Montevista, or is this business owners?
Yes, so there's. House one.
At five, they need three for a court, so they can't meet until.
We currently don't have.
Question?
Do you have paid position, or is this?
Volunteer.
It's volunteer. Okay. I just wanted to know. I don't have an opinion over the other.
Well, I think that we accept a lot of them. Of some. For asking these. Volunteer their time.
Council just gonna interrupt a little bit. I would certainly recommend, if you folks, even though it may not be a lot of money, so difficult. Just here, but. Important position, not a decision. Can hardly drag people off the street.
How many meetings a month do they usually have, this one?
Did you were optimistic that there were people that wanted to step up and do this? Have you have a basis for that? Have people been calling in and saying, hey, I want to do this, or?
I've been out, I've been outreach.
You've been outreach?
Yes.
Okay.
With his. Knowledge. I'll get the vote.
Right.
I'm drumming up people.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Just a question, I guess, just to kind of fill off of what you've been. Um. Would you think that it would be, you know, like, yes, it's optimistic for these, for us to think that these people will join that without having a stipend?
That will make a difference.
How long are the meetings?
Um, usually about an hour and two hours. Asking for a recommendation.
Do they meet regularly? On the regular? Once a month? Okay. You mind with that?
Yeah, I wouldn't be opposed. Like what Mike was saying, you know, it's. Who's gonna do it?
I like it.
Have a key motion on the floor. We can go ahead.
All right. Um, I would, I'm going to amend my motion and, um, add that we go from three members to five members planning and zoning, um, along with, um, just developing a payment or a stipend.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Planning and zoning to go from three to five, add a stipend of.
We, I need to say.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Need to amend my motion. Need to amend my motion, uh, and make a motion for the planning and zoning to go from three members to five members, um, along with a forty-dollar stipend to those who sit on the board. Per meeting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Have the planning and zoning go from three to five, add a forty-dollar stipend per meeting. Question? It's okay for me to ask a question? Okay. I'll be quiet over here. Nita.
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Loren.
Aye.
Mayor Pratim Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries for the planning and zoning to go from three members back to five members and to pay a forty-dollar stipend per meeting.
Hearing review by the city judge. The judge.
I don't like that. Well, uh.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm more comfortable standing. Uh, so I did, I got a email from earlier this week. I'm not sure there's a whole lot to report. You need to put our numbers together and. Is there those up there? Yes. So, I mean, basically, this is COVID. This beginning COVID, and this is beginning COVID again. Our, our numbers have gone down, like the rest of the state and all the other courts in the state, frankly, because of the COVID and appearances. Some reason we don't have as many traffic cases being filed, and quite frankly, that's the bread and butter for Montevista. For those of mainly the kind of cases that we see. I'm suspecting it has something to do with COVID, but I don't know for a fact, and there may be some enforcement reasons that I don't know anything about. So, that might be part of what's going on here. So, our case count in two thousand nineteen was eleven hundred sixty-eight, then last year was three hundred ninety-three, and this, two thousand twenty, it was three ninety-three. Two thousand twenty-one, it was five twenty-four. The, I guess, revenue, or I don't know how you guys want to describe it, but we raised a hundred, the revenue was a hundred twenty-five thousand in two thousand nineteen, thousand in two thousand twenty. Actually, given the fact there were only three hundred ninety-three cases. And then twenty-one, it was six thousand. So, we've got, I've been imposing the restitution. So, we collect restitution for the victims of cases, and that's something that, before I came here, I don't think the court did. Now, it's thousand, two thousand, two thousand, that's pretty steady. I think it's important to acknowledge the fact that the victims are out this amount of money or damages, and I think it's important both for the defendant and the victim to feel, I think it's important for the defendant to take care of the damages they may have caused in someone's way, and I think the victim feels like the city is going to bat for them when that happens. So, it's kind of a win-win. We're not as aggressive as some courts in trying to get restitution. So, essentially, what happens is some courts, they're not getting restitution. They put it into a civil collection. I talked to Forrest about that quite some time ago, and that wasn't something he was particularly interested in doing. You and I both talked to him about it, and we also talked about, like, some of these unpaid fines and whatnot, going into, having a civil collections branch as a way to get that money back. We're gonna be kind of in a, to use wrestling term, one-down position here this coming year. The Colorado legislature's changed a whole lot with the traffic code and traffic matters. They basically have instructed the Department of Motor Vehicles that they can't, they can't use unpaid fines as the basis for revoking someone's driver's license. If, you know, that gave us a lot of leverage with unpaid fines and whatnot, because people would be ordered to pay a fine and pay it, would send it to DMV or the Department of Revenue, and then all we had to do is wait till the person wanted their driver's license reinstated, and then they'd come over and they'd pay money, you know, to get it reinstated, because they'd have to get what we call a clearance letter saying that they're, essentially, we have a lien on their driver's license, and they would have to come and pay off their fines and costs. Then we give them a clearance letter, and then they get their driver's license back. But we're gonna lose that leverage, because the Colorado legislature made a lot of changes regarding traffic and licenses and DMV. So, you folks need to be aware of that, because I think it may affect the bottom line and some of the revenue and what. I think, myself, you need, Mike has done a really good job of accounting for the concerns that the CLU raised. So, I think we have a much better separation of church and, I say church and state, and I didn't mean that. Separation of powers with the executive branch, judicial branch, that, so I feel lots more comfortable now with what we're doing. That was happening about a few years ago. All sorts of fluff over and problems. You know, Mike, there's plea bargaining. Generally, we're speaking, we're able to a muster of cases, first or second appearances. There's not multiple court appearances and. We don't have to sentence anybody to jail, and part of that's because it saves the city a lot of money. They don't have to pay for attorneys. They also don't have to pay the Rio Grande County Jail to house these people. So, and, you know, that's kind of a trade-off. If we're not gonna bail things, you know, it does save the town a lot of money, I think. But it also means that we don't have as much fight or leverage, you know, as other municipalities that may oppose jail. I know Alamosa still poses jail, but they also pay for lawyers to come in and represent. Can't afford an attorney, essentially. They have a city public defender, and that's what we would have to do if you folks decided that that was a direction we wanted to take. Most of the juveniles involved, we end up sending them to the Center for Restorative Justice in Alamosa. Idea is, we're not trying to turn these children into hardened criminals, but we wanna, we wanted to, we wanna do a little cognitive restructuring. We want them to think about what they did and hopefully get to a point where they're not gonna repeat the behavior. Some schools are more cooperative with that than others. Some victims are more cooperative with that than others, because usually a lot of that stuff takes both parties, the offender and the victim both have to agree that, like, this mediation. But the Center for Restorative Justice in Alamosa, they also have like a one-day, eight-hour class rethinking services for, so for the underage possession tickets, that sort of thing. We utilize that service quite a bit, and I think that's been a good program. We haven't seen a whole lot of recidivism on that. And I think that, I don't know if you guys know about the Center for Restorative Justice, but they've done some really good work over the last ten years in the valley, and we started reaching out to them when I came on board, and I think it's a good way. And I think the parents appreciate the fact that we're not just yelling at the kids and sentencing them or hammering with a big fine or something. I mean, it's more positive and productive for. You know, right now, we're going through kind of a slump, because we don't have, you know, people aren't showing up for court, and I have this problem all over the valley. I mean, I have people who call into court, you know, and they must have had COVID twenty times. Too much to go with COVID, you know. So, it's a problem, and it's a problem all over. And then for us, it becomes a problem of, okay, how badly do we want to, do we want to issue a warrant for this guy? If he's picked up, we're gonna have to pay sixty-five dollars a day. If we issue a warrant and could turn him around really quickly, you might not have to pay sixty-five dollars a day. But the jail in Rio Grande isn't always real cooperative with the folks they take, and funny court judge, I've started setting my bonds at five hundred and three dollars. Have to take people that have a warrant for more than five hundred dollars. Anything less than that, they won't pay. So, that's just the political reality of your business, I think. And I don't really like to set those kind of bonds on some of these cases. Not appropriate, really isn't. And also, there's been some changes, again, thanks to the legislature, about setting cash bonds for traffic cases. If we get somebody picked up, say, on a traffic warrant or a traffic infraction or an offense, they have a cash bond set, we have to advise them very quickly, and we have to let them know that. Most of the time, we end up giving them personal recognizance. You know, we don't have people that are sitting in jail for thirty days or anything or whatever. They're more likely to be there for twenty-four hours. And then they get a personal recognizance bond, because that's what the law requires. So, anyway, I feel good about what we're doing. I think we're working with the community really well. I think, I'm sure there's some people don't like this. But, you know, generally speaking, I try to, like, they're real human beings, and with some respect and maybe a little humor at times. And we, I think actually, we cut way down on the recidivism, not the recidivism, we've cut way down on the failures to appear. Who aren't afraid to come to court. With my predecessor, people were afraid to come to court, because they were gonna yell at or be that they were gonna remand into the custody of the jail. And those days are over, and I don't believe people fear coming to court anymore. Do you? I mean. Foundation with Mike's, they're, they're really afraid of him. So, I think between the three of us, we have a big court. I feel good about it. I feel like we have positive values. I feel like we're doing a good job of dispensing justice, but also taking care of victims to the extent that we can. We're trying to recognize the fact that some of these people are drug addicts, and, you know, I've kind of come around to, if people don't want help, I can't force them into it, and I'm not gonna waste a lot of time having them come back to court because we're not getting the help. It's easier now, I think, to just deal with the reality of, this is a person not ready to make changes. I can't change that. And I'm not gonna have them come to court for the next six or four months to tell me that they got high again or something. I think it's a waste of all of our times and all of our time, and I hope so. I think it's a recognition of the limitations on our system. I don't know. I'm happy to take any questions or anything.
When did these changes come about from the legislature?
It's been mucking around, excuse my language, with the traffic code and traffic infractions and bond schedules for the last couple of years. And it's been a nightmare. It's been a nightmare from the state court perspective. You know, for a while, they were saying that repeat offenders on DUIs were entitled to personal recognizance bonds, and I think we finally got that squared away, but it took us over a year, the judge just, over a year to get through to them. But, you know, if you've got five prior DUIs, I'm not giving you a PR bond. Not. And, you know, obviously, we have too many safety concerns, and, but they've mandated a lot of cases to give, that people be, our bonds, which really takes a lot of discretion away from the. Especially on the state court level. Yeah, I'm not a happy camper with all the changes they're making. It's hard to keep up with them, and someone may absolutely know. Nonetheless, it's law, and it's kind of what we're stuck with, and, you know, we even have the Supreme Court justices being eating out to municipal, municipal judges, for, so how to run the court, how to make sure everybody's getting due process, and, you know, they're, they are happy to tell you what to do, but they're not happy to provide any funding for some of this stuff. I, I mean, I, for the most part, I follow the law. Quite frankly, when it comes to repeat offender DUIs. Lawyer to file appeal. I figured, but it's on the appeal if it, or the case might be resolved, but I think sometimes you just have to have some. I said to the guy about two months ago, twelve prior DUI conviction. Twelve. I didn't let him out on a PR bond. I know lawyers are mad, but. So, we also have a change DA, and I think that's problematic, because I think some cases, I think the cops, the law enforcement is getting somewhat discouraged, and that may be why we're not seeing as many cases either. I don't really know. I haven't sat down and really talked to George about it. Don't want him to think I'm micromanaging him. I mean, that's a separation of powers issue as well. But I will tell you, folks, that Montevista Police Department has gone from being like one of the least respected law enforcement agencies in the valley to being one of the most respected law enforcement agencies in the valley, and between John and George. I mean, I'm kind of proud, not that I have anything to do with it, but, but I am. I think they've, you guys. I think they've, you guys raised it up, the reputation's quite good now, and most of the serious cases I see now are filed by Montevista Police Office. They're not coming from the DA's office, and they're not coming from the sheriff's office, they're coming from Montevista. And maybe that's why the traffic numbers are down, I don't know, because they are filing and prosecuting pretty serious cases. For the most part, I think they do a really good job. Those officers show up in court, and. Any other questions, Dale? You got any hard ones for me, or any substantive questions?
How much would it take, given the problems with the DA, how much would it take to start putting people in jail? Do we have to have a full-time defense attorney, or is it on-call?
Okay, here's what you have to be prepared for. You have to be prepared to pay $65 a day for incarceration. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Nina, but I think when I first got here, it was $25 a year or something. How much was it? Do you remember?
Um, for, I'm sorry, for the.
Cost of incarceration for the city.
It was, it was pretty close to $50,000 a year that we were paying.
Okay. Uh, so that, $50,000 a year is an expense. We're gonna do that, we do, we're gonna have to have contracts, we're gonna have to have contracts with defense lawyers in the area to act as public defenders for the person who can't afford lawyers. So that's gonna be an expense, and generally, the contracts are somewhere between $100 and $200 an hour. We're also gonna have to step up our game with providing police reports and discovery. We'll have to get people into court much quicker. We have 48-hour turnaround for people that are picked up. They have to be advised. We would have to invest in upgrading some of the computer equipment you have, and so it's gonna cost you, and, I don't know, I'm not sure, you know, you throw them in jail for five days, and then what? You got a big bill, and where are you really at at the end of the day?
I just don't like hearing that our police officers are getting discouraged, because the case isn't being taken care of.
I think the problem, where they're getting discouraged is not at this level. I think it's a bigger problem for our district, the 12th Judicial District. It has a lot to do with the change of district and the different philosophy in terms of work, and who should be protected, and who shouldn't, and, which is not gonna say on the record about that.
Yeah, but when we were incarcerating people before, it was for just that reason, because things weren't prosecuted in district court locally.
When you were prosecuting people before what?
When we, when we were incarcerating people before, it was for just that reason, they weren't getting prosecuted in district court. So on certain offenses, they fit it here.
Yeah, we only have jurisdictions to do certain kinds of cases. And they're pretty, for the most part, they're very low-level traffic, and very low-level defenses, misdemeanors. And I can tell you that between Alamosa and Montevista, when all those people were being incarcerated, there were a lot of problems. People were being locked in jail for days at a time, and in fact, I'll also say, the reason a lot of that changes have been made with pay offenses and the courts were a direct result of what was happening in Montevista and Alamosa. And, and the judging that was being done, and, um, that's why a lot of those changes were made. So, I'm not saying it's on you all, it's not, but, but, Montevista and Alamosa, when you, if you ever read the article that was published by the ACLU, it was pretty indicting and pretty shame. Lawyers were, I wasn't very proud of the systems, I think they were providing due process. But if you want to go back to that kind of system, we're gonna have problems, because it has to be done right. It has to be done right, in customer, so, and so you have to decide where your, where the values are at, and how much money you have to spend. I would like to see the city consider prosecuting cases protection orders, because we get a lot of violations of protection orders. Right now, the, the code that we have, doesn't provide for prosecution of protection orders. That's where I see a lot of people flipping through the cracks, in domestic violence cases. See a lot of repeat domestic violence cases, and the repeat offender, defense, defender, defendant, sorry, and victim. So it's like the same victim, and those cases have been getting routinely dismissed in state courts. But there are times when I think a local touch, or a local hand on those, would be much better for the community, or for the alleged victims. But if we're gonna do it, then we have to provide due process for the person. That will involve more money, and it will involve jail, and it will involve being in court. I've often thought that the city could actually handle a lot of those cases a lot quicker, not run the risk of getting them.
Ballpark number, how many cases that would be a year?
I don't know if I can tell you that, because I, I mean, I can tell you that in state court, I have probably, oh, I don't know, maybe 200 domestic violence cases a year, maybe 300. They're getting dismissed so frequently right now, it's hard for me to keep up with them, and once a case is dismissed, I don't see it anymore. So, so I don't have those numbers. I would think, even if we did 50 a year, we, the city loses control over cases out into state court. We do, and then you're sort of at the mercy of the prosecutor, or the judge, or the prosecutor, to tell you the truth, because they have the ability to dismiss cases. Some of these protection orders, I think they get dismissed, I think they get dismissed quickly and way too easily. I had a guy today that I sentenced, who should remain nameless, but, so this is his fourth domestic violence conviction. They lived a, every time she did, kind of a lot, she would get beat up, there was, but then she wants to come back home, and that's kind of on her, but for me, as a judge, looking out at my community, I'm gonna give that guy, I gave him my year. I could've given him two years. But I can't do that, because cases are dismissed. I don't have a lot of discretion on the cases that are dismissed. It's a problem in our community, we really do. You know, I see a lot of homeless people that end up in front of me. I think that's also a community problem, but, a lot of resources is. Anyway, do you guys have any specific questions, or something else, or?
Question. First, a comment. Of one who has been a offender, I am way with, I could see. So that just has to cost their lives. Backlog of court, I'm a large dismissed.
Yes, but, you know, I think part of my job as a judge right now is to help people speak to the fire, and it's resolved. I shouldn't see somebody 10 times on a stupid charge, the lawyer involved is continuing to fight infinitely. I don't think it's, it's not a problem for the city courts, though, it's really a state court problem. They're not using public defenders, they're not using public defenders in the Alamosa City. They do have lawyers they are contracted with, that provide service. And, and if people are sitting in jail, they're usually not sitting there on a warrant for them. And this, I had a whole bunch of other cases. I think part of our issue, for issuing more warrants, is we have to get people in front of me sooner. That means transport. And we can use WebEx, but the city doesn't have WebEx. So then we use Zoom, but all the jails are set on WebEx, so there's that. And then we can only use the WebEx at certain times of the day, because the state courts and jails are doing advisements on sometimes more serious offenses. So, I mean, if we want to go into that arena, I'm fine with it, but it will cost a lot more money, and that's what you have to be aware of. If we're gonna do it, we gotta do it right. We gotta do it according to the Constitution. I suspect, and I have nothing to base this on, so I probably shouldn't say it, but I suspect you'd be looking at at least $100,000 or more a year. Like I said, I could be way wrong, but, my guess is.
Someone had 12 DUIs, that you saw. Do you use DUIs in?
They don't prosecute DUIs in municipal court. Sometimes I wish they would, but, again, the way that city were, were set up, they pop those into state court. Some cities, some bigger, prosecute DUIs, they prosecute domestic violence cases, and assault cases, and, you know, low-level things, but more than what we're doing currently with Montevista. I mean, it requires some changes, and aren't supposed to do those. Now, the DUIs were state court.
There has been a little bit of, don't have the discretion to lower fines.
Not their, that's, I'll just tell you that, that's not their job, and that's a separation of powers issue. And they can't be the judge and the enforcer, they don't get to be both. But I don't know what they're concerned about fines, I mean, that's totally up to the judicial branch, if you will. I'll take recommendations, it's sent, so we'll always listen to them. I don't recall one police officer coming up to me and saying anything about a fine. Now, if you're talking about bonds, are you talking about bonds?
No, they're talking about, like, if, if some, fine over, and they can, so that it wouldn't, awfully.
Right.
And their concern is, under the fine, is so it's our power, dynamics of our community, that they're, they're lowering the dollar fine, so that.
I think they're lowering traffic offenses too much as it is. But, you know, I see a ton of tickets where people had no proof of insurance, they're speeding 10 to 19 overs, a four-pointer, with much higher fines, and what they do is they write that, even though those are the offenses, they write the ticket for five to nine over, which is a one-point violation, and the fine on that is $70. Then no proof of insurance, and a mandatory minimum of $500. They can't monkey with that, that's not their deal, that's set by state statutes. And, you know, I have a pretty good relationship with most of the guys on the department, and they've got some issues, they should stop and talk to me about it, but not their job to do fines or anything else. They're the ones lowering these things to begin with, and quite frankly, I think it costs us more time in resolving some of those cases. You have people setting trials for a one-point traffic ticket, right? Even though they were originally, and were pulled over for maybe a four or a six-point speeding ticket, the officer doesn't write that as part of the ticket. So what's, what's Mr. Joe's incentive, if you will, not to go to trial on a one-pointer? Now, if he had been in court dealing with what he should have been charged with, we wouldn't be wasting our time going to trial on a one-point traffic violation, because of the way the tickets are written. I've been trying to encourage them to write what you see, write what's happening, write the charge, and then, but, you know, the fines are, they're set by the law of traffic code, adopted the law of traffic code, so there's not, and I have discretion to lower fines, and if they feel strongly about something, they can come to court and tell me that, you know, you think this guy, and I've had cops tell me, this person deserves a break, or something. And I really listen to that, and, but, you know, if someone's getting it deferred, the fine's gonna be higher, and the reason is, because we have to supervise the case, keep it open, that takes her time, my time, and Mr. Tahila's time, if they don't follow through with the deferred. So I don't think it's quite as simple as it may have been presenting. But I'd be happy to talk to those officers, but it's not like the old days, where I was a defense lawyer, I would go to Alamosa or Montevista, and sit around a room with the city prosecutor and five cops, and they pretty much tell me how the case is gonna go. We don't practice like that anymore. That's not the right way to practice, so, they don't have quite the say that they used to. And I also think they've been shut down, I don't, I don't know that they're getting as much attention as they should be from prosecutors. That's part of it, but this isn't the level they have the beef, and if they want to say something, they can tell Mr. Tahila, they can tell me. I'm always happy to hear that, I'm always happy to get more information about people.
The line is going down, you're still.
No, and truthfully, what I do when I sentence people to a fine, I ask them about their financial, like, I have a obligation to do that, and I do, to make sure that they can financially afford the fine. So if you come and tell me that you live on $900 a month, and you're sleeping outside, I'm gonna give you a $35 fine. And we also allow people the option of doing community service with a little fine. And we started that about, I don't know, a year and a half ago, or something, and COVID kind of hit that too, but, you know, I think that that was the good way to let people who didn't have money, you know, work off some of their fines. It was a lot easier when the weather was warmer, but they can volunteer, any of the, volunteer the nonprofit places around here, and, I think we've had pretty good success with that program, to tell you the truth. But again, so we wouldn't be generating revenues, but I try to accommodate people, if they don't have money, and that's why we give them the option to do it.
Yeah. Would you consider ever assigning them specifically to city and Montevista?
Well, of course, it is, it's, it's very much frowned on, frowned upon for me to be directing where donations need to go, or where they need to do to their community. And if I get in the position where I'm ordering people to work for the city, it's starting to look like involuntary servitude, and that's not a good thing, and I'm sure Mike doesn't want to defend that kind of lawsuit. So it's just easier to make it an auction for them, and, you know, probably six times out of 10, they'll opt for doing it with the city, because they want to work outside, or they want to work with Otto, or whatever. But I let them find it, they keep track of their hours, you need it as a sheet form, they bring it back to court in 60 days, and if they've done the hours, done deal, case closed, they have the paving money. Now, there was some issues and concerns initially about liability of the city, I don't know if that ever really got resolved, but, just the last couple of years. Not like something you all want to look into, because there should be a waiver of liability when they're, when volunteer works. Welcome. You know?
Wanted to clear something up, as she was telling you guys about the jail. In, I'm, about 2015, the city paid $52,000 to the jail. 2016, we paid $4,000. 2017 was $30,000, and then the legal expenses, 2015, we paid over $8,000. 2016.
Now, I'll tell you, the legal expenses are not accurate in terms of, my predecessor used to appoint one attorney to represent a co-defendant. There were three people charged with the same crimes, they all worked together, he'd get one lawyer to do all three, and that's highly unethical for the lawyer. And if we're gonna get into that, I would appoint separate lawyers for each defendant, because I think that's what the Constitution would. So, the, the legal expenses may, would end up probably being, I just.
I'm concerned that, that people aren't going to jail, because, because of.
I'm concerned that, that people aren't going to jail because, because of, because of expenses. I know some are, but some...
Not many.
Some aren't because we don't want to spend money, and I understand that, too. It's taxpayer money.
Yeah.
So there's my concern, and I don't know what the answer is.
Well, I'll tell you what. This is what I told the... To have somebody, a offender, sign them into county court, have probation, we have free lawyers, we have jail, and none of that's going to cost the City of Montevista a dime. So if one of the officers has somebody who's a chronic offender, send them into county court, county court, the state court. They have all the resources. Drugs for the drunk drivers, supervising on probation. If I think they need jail up to thirty or sixty days, that's not going to be on your dime.
Have a good DA, though.
I'm sorry?
It only works when the DA is doing his end.
Well, I don't...
And that's why we, you know, we could pick and choose. That's still an option. But if there's a case we think the DA is not going to prosecute and we think it's important enough, it'd be nice to have the option to take care of it locally.
Do you have the option if you expect, if you expanded your code for violations? And we have to do it right.
Yeah, no, of course, obviously.
And it is going to cost you more money. And it is a problem because we can't, we don't really get a way to supervise people particularly well. And so like, if somebody gets sentenced to domestic violence, I'm a domestic violence case in front of them, they're required to do treatment. They're required to do so many hours of community service. They're required to have the probation officer. Those are all P for, most data Colorado. And those are things that we would have to set up systems. There are municipalities who do it, like in the Springs and Denver and different places that's bigger than us. They have more money than we do. Dale, you want to cut me off? I saw you looking at your watch. I'm nothing if not a servant.
I have one more question, but I know in 2018, we did take jail off a resolution because of the cost. Definitely benefited the city as far as finances based on the court. But, you know, like, community service, and I just got to ask this because of the way I feel about community service that... I, and they can go to help Rob or something like that, but is it written somewhere or whatever that, like, if somebody did something wrong and they said, hey, I want to go help Rob out, and Rob says, well, you're going to pull weeds all day?
And it's not involuntary servitude, but if that's what needs to be done, then that's what they're going to have to do. Um, part of the deal. That's where you see these guys out on the highway, one of us, and, no, but, you know, picking up trashes. But one time, uh, we were kind of trying to do that more with juveniles. Who's the animal control officer?
I don't know that.
Yeah, he's been great about that, and he was meeting with the group on a Saturday or something, and they spent four hours if he supervised. And that kind of got... I think it was a good program, and it didn't pass as a dime. Mike was looking at his watch, too. Now I'm really getting nervous.
I hope you think of all the time.
So happy to answer questions anytime, anybody has them. If they want to come to court and sit for a couple hours, they can. Welcome. I'm off to something else, and you want to give me a call? I don't know how to reach you. My cell phone, everybody's cell phone has my cell phone. I can't get back to you within... Were there some other things? You said something about my contract, Gigi?
Well, that's farther down on the agenda, but, um, council, they have not looked at re... account your contract.
Well, my contract's expired, apparently.
Right.
So, uh, and I, you know, if we're going to reapproach the contract, I'd rather do it in an executive session, not a public...
Yeah.
If that's what you guys want to do, then just let me know, and I can come to an... Yes, I assume by your silence that the contract, you can at least tell that you told me a one or two. How I'm going to add it in.
I'm with you. I don't want anxious talk. Thank you.
I signed the check for Marv Zollers.
You keep doing that, Dale. You keep doing that. I've enjoyed working for the city, frankly. I liked the challenge of kind of reconstructing the court and the events, and super accommodating. You know, I do have some suggestions for, and I'll probably talk to Gigi about that in terms of some updated equipment and, uh... Probably the appropriate person for me.
Mr. Trujillo.
All right, Mike, see if you can talk me.
No. Never been in federal court since 2016, no.
Mayor, Council, uh, just to follow up a little bit on some of the stuff here with Judge Zollers, I do think the court runs pretty good at this point, and, um, basically de generalized a lot of things back a few years ago because it was so expensive for the city and the city was running a major loss. And I think it's important to note that a lot of these folks are not hardened criminals. I mean, you're talking about shoplifters, people that are speeding, trying to get to work, low-level assaults, some harassment-type things. So question, you know, to some degree, do you put those lower-level folks that aren't really hardened criminals, do you put them in jail for ten days? Now they've lost a job, now their family, now their house, now everything goes to heck. And the reality, and I think the officers here know that if it's something serious, go into county court because you generally have all the tools to deal with somebody: probation, jail, public defenders, everything else. We were spending, I got on board, fifty thousand and another ten thousand in defense costs. That figure's going to go way up because back at that time, the jail was thirty-five dollars a day. Now it's sixty-five. My attorney would be charging fifty dollars an hour, now it's a hundred and fifty. So imagine those costs would just go extremely double, maybe triple. Need to have more time with the judge, more time with myself. Defense lawyers create problems, so then you've got to have better reports, more time with the officers. Um, and I think you can see how it would ratchet up tremendously for the taxpayers of the city. And I'm not sure what you would necessarily gain. People need to be put in jail, and there's no doubt if somebody needs to, then we'll do that. But for the most part, over-level folks trying to get to school and get their kids on time and they're speeding, going too fast, or minor offenses of theft, trespass, those kind of things.
Curfew violation.
Curfew violation, those kind of things. So the reality is, you know, spending all that time for the police, um, you know, those are costs that you don't even think about or figure out what it costs. I mean, if a policeman has to spend three extra hours, you've got to throw his time into the equation, and now he's not out on the street patrolling. So, I don't know. I think right now it's probably a pretty good situation. Not that a court needs to make money, but for it was water big time. I'm telling how much police time and all that other stuff that you can't really measure going on. So I think right now with the type of folks that are coming into this court is really low-level, unhardened criminals. Um, anyway, but I do think overall, um, the courts are running good. I think we have a good relationship with Zollers. I think NIDA does a good job, the police do a good job. Um, you know, and I, I want to say when they do real good reports, and, you know, it makes our job a lot easier. If I see a good report and they got somebody dead in the water, that guy's going to plead out right there. Get poor reports, things aren't done, forgot to do this, forgot to do that, then you've got problems, and somebody sees a chance to maybe go to trial and cost everybody a lot more time. But, you know, our police, uh, over time, courts have gotten better, and I, I know we've had some, uh, color, and even prior to that, we had some good, uh, good policemen and good police. Things have gone, I think, a lot better up, quality's much better, my job a lot easier, makes Judge Zollers' job a lot easier. Uh, so we don't have a lot of trials. Folks, got them dead in the water, show them the reports, show them the videos. If I sign up, plead guilty, so. Pretty good, pretty good system. Um, I don't know. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time unless, you know, you, we have a lot of work sessions, special meetings, uh, last month. Trying to review everything in over a year's period of time is a little bit tough. We've made some progress on selling properties. In fact, we're going to close on the Resil Building, I think, on Monday. But, uh, we're money on that deal. Well, that took an awful lot of time and work and research and, uh... But, you know, I think the cities were getting rid of properties, urban renewal was getting rid of properties. Um, the days at the city downtown, we got those sold. Um, we ended up with, uh, turned up title, I think I've told you folks before over at, uh, the Sky High Project, we got that property cleared up and ready to do whatever needs to be done or the city can try to do with it. Tried to keep the lawsuits as best we can. We've got one pending right now, but when I got on board, we had four serious, major lawsuits that got resolved, but it's cost the city an awful lot of money, and so one thing I try and do is prevent as much as you can, and sometimes you, it won't always work out that way, but, um, trying to keep that down saves us an awful lot of money, and that's always, uh, all the time. A lot of the things that I've done is review contracts, and I mean, we have contracts almost on, um, grants. I just, I did one, I think it was on the airport with Rob here, and grant comes in, and there's fifty pages of grant material that, uh, read through that, certify that everything looks good and that we have the ability and authority to get into those things. And of course, all that stuff takes time. The Sky High Project was a major event. Banks and meeting, MP committee, Horace and Jenny back in the day, I mean, just a ton of meetings, a lot of review of documents, some documents that had outside counsel prepare. I had to review them as a matter of course, and they're thirty, forty pages. I mean, just a lot of that kind of stuff. Um, I think, and of course, every month, we've got resolutions and ordinances, and I re-review everything that goes through before you guys get to it. Uh, not reviewing ordinances and resolutions. A lot of times, staff will put together proposals. NIDA's great at doing a lot of those things and say, here it is, what we need to do. And even though, you know, you look at Planning Commission, we do a lot of public hearings there, but all that, again, takes time just because here's a proposal. You've got to look at it and see if it meets with everything we're doing and review it, make sure we're good. Um, so I think as a general proposition, I feel like, you know, the city's making a lot of progress all the time. I feel good about the city. I think it's progressing. Um, law enforcement does great, public works, the work they do and all the staff here. And it's probably every week I've got a question from somebody in the staff about some issue. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts to this city. Um, using, you know, works to grants to contracts to resolutions. Probably doesn't know where the problem is. They'll talk to NIDA because it must be a lot of moving parts going just right out of her office. So, and then working with Judge, I mean, with Chief Dingfeller while he was in, he was probably, I was on the horn to him on speed file probably two or three times a day because he knew what to do. So kind of got him guided through and decided to have Gigi on board. I think she's going to be great. I'll hold our feet to the fire, unfortunately, but a lot of optimism out there in the city that I see by just having her. So, uh, don't have too much else really to say. I feel like we're going pretty good overall. Problems will come up. To our system, I mean, problems. And we'll continue to be those problems, and it's just a matter of trying to address them, trying to be as proactive as we can. Please. Um, don't have much else. If there are any questions or...
Talk to you all the time, so... We talk to you all the time, so you know, you answer questions.
Well, you guys know more about me than I do. I'm here, I seem, I feel like I'm here and I should almost have an annex office. There isn't one.
He's a mom there or something.
Right, right. It's, uh, and we're running out of space, I think, even at the courts. I mean, we kind of meet in the hallway, meet in a little cubby hole, and, but we just do as we can.
That's an extra cost. Meet them lately. Do you have any questions for Mike?
Thank you. It's a pleasure working with you folks.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, we will go to citizen comments. See, council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit them to three minutes. Council will not take action at the same meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I have three things I want to put on the record, so...
Thank you.
All right, my name is Bob Richards. I'm the general manager for the radio stations here in Montevista. Um, three things I want to just get on the record. The first thing is, the question I was going to ask when I was inappropriate before was, if somebody's going to serve on the Planning and Zoning Committee, do they need to be a resident or can they be a business owner? And would you consider a business owner in lieu of a resident? So... So I don't want to debate that now because I only have three minutes, but that was the question I was going to ask. Second thing is, my office and studios, as many of you know, is at 109 Adams Street. It's above the Sunflower Bank and it overlooks the 100 block of Adams Street. And I've noticed recently raised voices out there, especially Thursdays, Fridays and Saturdays due to people not adhering to parking restrictions on the street, people parking in handicap spots that shouldn't be. And I think before I would point the finger at law enforcement for not enforcing that, I would say to you, that street needs a paint job. There's nothing but a little maybe speck of blue paint on a curb where it's supposed to be a handicap spot. There's people parking in spots that I know for a fact are non-parking spots. Anytime of night that they choose, they block the alleyway or thoroughfare there that goes, that Sunflower Bank has to go from the alleyway to Adams Street. And so I'd just like to suggest, I don't know what it costs, but I would highly suggest we try to get that street painted as possible. Third thing is, I wanted to be open in this forum and tell everybody that I have filed an open request for documents and basically I have, I'm looking for the past two years, all of the records on lawsuits that were filed against the city. I also requested documentation on any settlements that were given over that period. And the reason I'm doing that, and I just want everybody to hear it from me so that there's no, why is he doing this? He's the radio guy. Reason I'm doing it is because it came to my attention that there is cottage industry perhaps of one that's popping up and filing lawsuits, not just in Montevista, but throughout the valley and trying to settle them and making money doing so. And so I filed the request first here in Montevista to see if that person's name shows up. And if it does, I'll file requests everywhere else in the valley and try to bring that to light, if not do an interview with and confront the individual who's doing that. So I, you know, that's why I'm doing it. I got a lot of friends in this room and I didn't want you to think there was any other reason for that. That's what it's for and that's what I'm going to pursue. Three minutes are up, I'll answer any questions.
Gigi did say that we could have one business member on the planning and zoning.
One business member, great, okay, thank you.
Will you look for your application?
Yeah, well that's.
Answer your question, number two, all the streets are going to be great as far as what we normally.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
Margot?
Good to see you. Oh, it's good to be back. Hello, everybody. I tell you, between my heart and COVID, it's been an exciting bunch of months, but here I am and I have two issues I'd like to bring up. Over the first time since probably a year, I have seen dogs running the streets and we're talking big dogs on 160 and Morris area, Second Avenue. Do we still have a code enforcer? Okay, just to bring that to his attention, be like two dogs here, three dogs here and just roaming and I couldn't tell if they had a collar or not, but just for attention that this is going on. And the other thing is, I was disappointed. Okay, first of all, I thought Christmas was amazing in town. People decorated, there are businesses, the streets look great. Everything was gay, joyful and happy with a good parade and everything. And here we have the, pardon me, I just, I mind is still a little fuzzy from the anesthesia. Uh, the, uh, oh, good heavens. You know, where you get right there by the Chamber of Commerce, good heavens, Chamber of Commerce, not a light, not a roof, nothing. Two years in a row and that disappointed me. After we went to the park and had the celebration with the lighting and everything, coming home, even my daughter said, what's up with that? So I just want to say I was disappointed and not very happy about that. But I want to tell Rob, thank you so much, you're out there with the city sweeper. I saw him the other day, yay. And things are looking good in town, but I just wanted to bring those two things out for, you know, maybe next year we can have something on there. It is our chamber. Thank you.
Margot?
Thanks, Margaret.
Good to see you. Other citizen comments? All right, we will go down to contracts, agreements and leases, solar solutions.
So do you all have some more in-depth?
Had no concerns with the contract?
Motion to approve contract with solar solutions for installation. Solar sells at Sky High.
Moved and seconded to approve the contract for solar solutions. But we built at Sky High Park. More discussion? Do that, we need to add approval.
And I would like to amend the demotions for the city manager to sign the contract.
Secondary. Moved and seconded and amended and seconded to approve the contract between solar solutions and the city of Montevista for the solar panels at Sky High Park. Is there any? And allow the city managers. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Council Foster?
Aye.
Council Locke?
Aye.
Council Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Pratim Sivella?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to move this fuller contract and have managers sign at Sky High.
Bob, H U T F mileage certification.
Yes, sir. Good evening, council. Tonight in front of you is our annual mileage certification for the city of Montevista and Colorado Department of Transportation. I already used. Each, each year we have to certify how many miles of road that we have. This year, the only changes to our system was a surface change and that was over on Rob with our street project where we went from a traveled road to a paved road. No changes in our mileage therefore. The city has 7.49 miles of arterial roads, 21.4 miles of local road for a total of 28.89 total miles of H U T eligible streets. Two, four miles of non-H U T streets that have been maintained by others. With council's approval, I would need you to make a motion to approve the certification and have the mayor sign that. Source of funding for the city to the tune of roughly 150.
Motion to approve the mileage certification and authorize the city manager to sign. Mayor. Mayor, I guess. Second. Been moved in second to approve the H U T F mileage certification and have the mayor sign it.
Council Foster?
Aye.
Council Locke?
Aye.
Council Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Pratim Sivella?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the H U T F mileage certification and have the mayor sign.
Rob? Montevista golf course, Mr. Hersink.
Mayor, council, here to ask guys to renew our lease again for this year and I brought I was this last time, all the rounds and everything. So 2021, the golf course had a total of 5,775 rounds of golf played. A given day, have up to 77 rounds a day. Very busy and having carts pop constantly. Waiting list to come play on weekends. Our membership from 2019, we had 79 memberships. 2021, we had 100 and, or 2020, we had 127 memberships. 2021, we had 172 memberships. Past two years, we've been almost 100, 100 new members and that's, that includes families too, the family membership also. Put on ladies league of Tuesday nights, men's league of Thursday nights. And this, this past year, we put on a deal to co-ed tournaments, play every Sunday. For good to come out and play just to have fun and have fun games in the evenings, whatever. And they mounted tournaments we held last year, was pretty decent. We had the Lynn Martinez Memorial, we did that one, and the five kid run. Had the Montevista High School girls' golf tournament, the family reunion golf tournament. Larry Holder Exercise and Cancer Survivorship Tournament, MP shootout, the K-9 tournament at Montevista PD, other class reunion. Delmar Girls Basketball Golf Tournament, Montevista High School Football Tournament, our club championship, High School Boys Golf Tournament, the JV High School Boys Golf Tournament, Delmar Rotary Golf Tournament and then we did the cross country track. Pretty in tune with the whole community and everything. Delmar, Alamosa, covered everybody. It's looking good this year. We should have another big year. Memberships are coming in. I think we have almost a record amount of early memberships coming in this year, so it's looking like it's going to be another good year for golf.
The city was doing $40,000 to renovate the, for starting the funding for the new pro club or whatever it's called.
Pro shop.
Pro shop, thank you. Is that money set aside in a separate account or is it just being held? How is, how is that money being accounted for?
We haven't received the money yet.
Okay.
And the money's probably just going to be, so basically what's going on now, Rob, I've worked with Rob and Gigi pretty closely on this whole deal to get it all going. I got ahold of architects and engineers and they're working on getting all that done right now and Rob's going to have a bid next week to tear the building down. So pretty much as soon as we get the money, if I go to our general stuff, but it's immediately going to get used just for everything going to play. So like, find time frame for this whole new clubhouse, have it up and running by winter time next year, end of this year, the winter time, have everything be done and finalized. So as soon as, and Rob, I've talked to the mitigation guys throughout the asbestos and they're going to come and get it done. Matthias Concrete willing to help us tear down the building or Public Works, whichever is best for the whole city, whatever we want to do. And then as soon as, as soon as I get everything back to architect and engineers, we'll be good to go as soon as the building is stored out, we can put up and get going right away.
So Austin, do you want to talk about the increase this year lately?
Oh, yes, sorry. Did you put on the yearly expenses? $1,000, so it's the same as the Chamber of Commerce pays. And also in the lease, it's in there now that if something were to happen to the golf course, it'll all save, everything just goes belly up. The city gets the lawn mowers and everything that you guys have purchased back. It all goes right to, back to you guys, the city to use, sell or whatever you guys need to do. All that stuff you gave us, if something happens, it all comes back to you. And for the driving range, I have the driving range re-leased because we don't own it. Paul will do. Re-leased, saying that they're liable. On that, they can't come for us, the city, nothing. That's solely their property, he lets us use it at our will. That's just.
New commerce?
If they pay $1,000, so our lease is now $1,000 instead of.
Money, I think?
We paying $1,000 now for our lease instead of $100. Yes, it's an interest.
Sure.
Increase last year. This year.
This year.
This year, you just made.
This is the new contract.
Yes.
New contract.
Okay.
There anything else?
We, Austin and Rob and I, we shot through different departments within. Help get bigger. That will help golf scores and Austin and everything like. So Rob, on what that service was. That piece of the. We've been very, very pleasant. Able and we've got two representatives.
And your homework, I appreciate that, Austin.
I bet I'll take care of it. As soon as architecture gets it back to me, I'm going to send everything to Gigi so she can take a look at it. She looked up at the building. I built the building. I go on the internet and 3D designs and I built the whole building, how it can be laid out. I showed it to Gigi and Rob and they liked the idea and the design of it and it's going to match. It's going to look good, it's going to look nice. What I'd like to do is, so the whole building is going to be, they have a little kitchen in there, you'll have your pizzas, hamburgers, hot dogs, your golf course room. There'll be some TVs in there and some tables and chairs for people to hang out, tournaments, keep spending money in there. And I'm going to incorporate putting two to three golf simulators in there. Has anybody been to Hooper down there and seen how they have that set up? They have three sim, three simulator bases that are next to each other's and you can play down there any course in the country that you want on one simulator. So rather than a lot of people having to drive to Hooper to play, I'd like to put those here in town, generate job new for us and more people to come. And it's not just for golfers, it's just you have different games and stuff, kind of like talk off, but it's in a simulator and you can do it year round. So it's open up like a winter league for people that want to play year round, you can come in and you can have your own winter league teams, same as your summer teams. You can play each other on the simulator throughout the winter. You can rent it for an hour, two hours or whatever, but it's not just for the golf course. I mean, I've had a lot of people come up and ask me when it's going to be done because they want to come do it in the winter time, it's something else to do here. Because right now in the town of Montevista, I don't think there's a whole lot to do at nights and on the weekends and certain stuff like that. I mean, you have the bowling alley, I don't know what rain bruise is anymore, if it is anything anymore. What's about the bar, the restaurant, I don't know what it is. But give communities, other people some, something else they can come and do and have fun time. It's more of a community thing, not just the golf course. And once the building is done, we're open up, you can have your parties there, you can have a birthday party, a little wedding party, stuff like that in the house. That's more of the general idea of what we want to do.
So you did your homework. Let's look at their lease. Motion to approve the lease of the Montevista golf course for $1,000. Moved and seconded to approve the Montevista golf course lease for $1,000. No more discussion?
Got the check. I'd like to just thank you guys too. I appreciate it. You guys helped the city too. Rob? Big help you guys have all been. And let us continue to try to grow. And let us continue to try to grow.
Probably vote first. Mine not, man.
It's, it's good. It's bold.
No, I'm saying, we haven't voted yet. You should probably not have.
You need us?
Councilor Foster?
I.
Councilor Locke?
I.
Councilor Loren?
I.
Mayor President Sivella?
I.
Mayor Becker?
I.
Motion carries to approve the golf course contract for a thousand dollars.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Girls are part of that, too, so appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm pretty happy with how the golf course is. Either one eighty, you know?
You, Austin? Enterprise fleet management.
So. They kinda tried to make it a little simpler, you just gotta explain all this. He met with enterprise fleet management. He looked at the, our vehicles. And. On. Of those, thirty percent or twenty out of fifty-one are twenty years or older. Ten percent. Three vehicles of fifteen years or older. Thirty-seven vehicles that are older than ten years. During that life cycle. Seven of the vehicles predate anti-lock break. Seven and seven. Nine vehicles. Some have the electronics. The controls standard. And. I've heard. Rob, Rob has been very crugal and very. Rob in looking for the best. Luck, and we. Are the. After your. Budget, you all approved. One cent committee who budgeted a thousand dollars and could be. General plan budget. Eight thousand dollars. So what enterprise is proposing? Five or any. That's money and that hundred and. Those fifty. I'd say three and a half. Ready to start. And at the end of the lease, and keep them. Or we can back in and make sense of. So it's a way to keep. Without having to. Fire and. And that was some of the. And. Oh, I don't know for all of that time. Several of these. All firestone. Base. Fire. Or whatever. And. Places have. Bringing these programs. Volume of vehicles. First tasking for your. I can see how. Financial. Opportunities.
Type of vehicles do they?
They supply.
Yeah, Dodge Durango.
So, so like, what about like, someone like the maintenance vehicles? Do they do trucks, like?
Yes. I'll let Mr. Up on that piece of it.
So, um, enterprises, they finance all the, when they're talking medium-duty vehicles, it would be our tandem dump trucks and. All those things are financed. They have a, a lot of ability to reach out and look at different options for us. They're able to get state. So for the P D, just to kinda pick back on what Gigi's been saying, is, at least for the P D, so P D's budget with what they had, they were originally planning three fully outfitted vehicles. By doing the lease, they can increase that to five vehicles. Side side, which is known as a white fleet. Um, but we had originally budgeted for two. Covid and some of the supply issues are making it really, most of the manufacturers of automobiles have. Shut down production, and they're not taking any models or orders for models for government. Purpose last year. They won't open it up again until May or. This year. So for us to order and have the factories build us a vehicle. Really not a huge option for us. But we would have to be looking at what they call. Right now, dealer stock on vehicles. High, they've reduced their amount of rates they give governments. Fortunately, that has kinda gone over. Dodge, at least from. Side side of things. Really kinda hurt. Offer a ten thousand dollar discount on their vehicles. Their stock to twenty-five. To sell. So, um, I'm still working with enterprise to see if there's some vehicles out there that would fit us, but we are currently looking at it. Proves this, the potential that what I had budgeted for for two vehicles, I could actually. Or, um, the other thing, at least from the P D side, the P D vehicles are extremely. Given hard, and just get a lot of wear and. Two lease program like this, they're not running the vehicle until its complete life is over. So at the end of the four-year lease on the police vehicles, they're able to then turn the car back into enterprise. Enterprise will then credit the city, whatever that value is of that car at that time, and they turn around and they go out. It makes the next lease's next vehicle considerably cheaper. They give us a four or eight thousand dollar allowance. They decked out police vehicles. That's, that eight thousand dollars is much less than the next vehicle cost. Forty-five thousand dollars. For, for the chief, it's really good. Um, this program would allow us, from my side, to go from a twenty-year life cycle to probably. Off the wall story. Um, I have one vehicle that's nineteen seventy-two. It's headlined. Headlined, and I cannot get parts. Don't make parts. Order to do that, I would have to find a junkyard that happened to have one. Do it or. Strip the rear end.
And budgets going forward?
Can you run those numbers by me again, because you said how much was approved by the one cent committee and how much was budgeted on those?
So. We did two thousand out of the one. Nine thousand out of.
If we approve this as a four-year lease, correct? We just obligate the one cent committee to spend that sixty thousand dollars for that purpose for the following three years?
Management leasing is set up, so there is no eagle for a government to appropriate funds for. Management leases are dependent upon you adopting a budget. Council for some reason decides they don't wanna do it. So, of, of those funds, the cars at that time.
Then we're gonna be seeing this contract every year?
Similar contract. Idea behind doing a lease. Um, in the December, I don't know if. Very much. Was down, he didn't have enough police cars. To run his fleet and his shifts. Our one shop coordinator, who was. Had a contract that outside. This way, instead of facing that our police force would have. Ease of mind to. Cars. To cover it under warranty. Their warranties for. Our police cars are. Miles is much. Most of the time, all the cars under your lease. Paid items or drive trains and things like that, usually ten years. Warranties are three years, thirty-six thousand. That's another thing to think about. From a fleet. Brake at any moment where he came. Fires, having a fleet that's. Unknown or the. Cost is, use maintenance costs. His vehicles are under. Mechanic. Our city fleet. Thing adult.
So this gives us a better opportunity to have more vehicles.
So the city's currently doing the lease. He did do a lease program with a different wind. He's for a couple of cup cars a few years back. Those have been paid off. All of the city's heavy equipment are under a lease currently with Kansas State Bank. That lease is. Went from an average of nineteen twenty-five or older. Heavy equipment pieces. Everything is a two thousand sixteen. And those machines are under a complete warranty for the entire tenure of the lease. Four brand-new machines and have cost the city zero dollars other than special services and. Always had to put in the. Only that cut almost twenty thousand dollars out. Similar, not, not, not to stack, but the same type of percentage. Reduce his maintenance.
Are these readily available, or they got to build?
Have to build them, so if they're ordered now, they should be delivered. For, um, right now, we, we originally budgeted for one, one supervisor's truck and one service truck and. A, with the lease program, I'll be able to buy two supervisors, and when I say supervisors, truck, I'm talking. Quarter-ton four-wheel-drive trucks with utility bodies. And what. Every, every newer vehicle would move down and into our fleet by about.
Will enterprise take the other vehicles, the old vehicles?
They have no value.
So you're the enterprise junkyard, right? Okay. Well, there'll be some vehicles possibly for some.
One other vehicle that would go out of fleet is. I've. The one is a. I have four.
A bug truck?
No, it's actually, it's our spare truck, so our mosquito trucks would go away. Missing those trucks with a. And. Just the one purchase would increase our fleet numbers by.
Is there anything that you don't like about? That fight, things like?
For me, I mean, leases are pretty standard. A little bit in history. Think enterprise is fine from the research that we've done, and Chief has done far more research than I've been. Enterprise is probably one of the most reputable. Companies. Area as far as Colorado and. Have a lot of contacts, they have a lot of community. Probably our neighborhood of a hundred. Like them in the state of. Not a small unit. One, they have the buying ability to get us a little. Us to. Offer some... It allows the city on the same amount of money to...
I like the idea. I think it's...
I don't like the idea that we actually had a shift where we almost didn't have enough cars for our police officers. I certainly don't want to have to leave my husband at home with the burglar while I run down here to give a police officer a ride. Therefore, therefore, I'm going to move that we approve the Enterprise fleet management contract and get our police officers some vehicles that they can count on.
Moved and seconded to approve the Enterprise fleet management contract. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Scola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the Enterprise fleet management... The chief would have been, been...
Give the city attorney and the city manager a car to drive toward?
I will.
If they break the law, yes.
Here's a nineteen seventy pickup that they can use. Okay, city attorney contract and city judge contract.
So, we started looking at the dates and these were ongoing and... Contracts are typically looked at... On there for you just to revisit. Review, thank you. And so I think you're, you've got a couple different options. Renew, you can request... A fee for a request. As Judge Zoller said, about... Testing the... That would be done in an...
They're ongoing contracts. It's not like you weren't out of a job ever. You're just an ongoing contract.
I'm not, I'm sorry.
It wasn't out of, you weren't out of a job. The contract didn't have to be renewed. It's an ongoing contract.
No, I think it ha, it's a, I think it's...
I'm still signing the check, so you just keep...
I have a feeling if she doesn't get a check, she's walking.
That's it, that's it. Sort of contract, uh... Last year, I, before, I don't even think I had a...
Been since we had an RFP out for legal services. Um, year and a half. Year. I was here when we did that. So, it's been less than two, it's been, um...
Like a year and a half.
Yeah, I'm thinking it was a year and a half we did that. Think we need to look at the contracts myself and then set visit. That's the oldest not to show up next court. As long as she's getting a check, she's happy.
She doesn't get a check.
They're not the one to be calling her. But yeah. Think we've got some discussion.
Got some work sessions together?
Each other so infrequently lately. Oh. First, bring pizza last time failed. Bring it in? Sorry, guys. I was sitting at the table. So, we need to table this, these two contracts? Table these two contracts for session discussion? To table contracts for city attorney and city judge to a special session or a work session to be picked at a later date. Moved and seconded to table the city attorney contract and city judge contract, a work session at a later date. More discussion? Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Scola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to table the attorney and judge contract to work session.
Leave Federal Bank in that one.
So, all we are requesting is that our asking... Eight vendors and contract vendors. We can, they can do automatic, we can do automatic. Putting the check same.
Hold that over her head.
The cost is, the cost is five dollars a month. But that's for as many...
I'll never know if I'm getting paid. I won't let... My life checks at home.
That's who I want to be married to.
Tells me when I'm low on funds.
So, it's just...
I would move to approve your...
I did. Moved and seconded to approve the SOB Federal Bank contract. More discussion? Nita?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Scola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve for SOB Federal Bank automated clearing house origination of...
How many less checks I have? Checks that aren't yours. Some of them shocked me, Larry. Hey. Not mine. Staff report.
Actually, I...
Oh. She doesn't have anything. Her name's not on.
I've just been taking my time trying to do stuff and... I've got hard listening to me anyway.
But you're really getting good at your reports.
Oh, it's just, it, there's a lot of extra added entries and reconciliation for the end of the year, you know? And I, I probably had it done today, but... But you'll get to see it next time.
Okay. Be sure and highlight that. We're counting on you.
I know, right? That's what we said last, maybe you're right.
Be sure and highlight that on my paper so I don't miss it again. Before we do staff proposals, we're taking a brief, brief... I'm taking a brief, brief... Too much water, huh?
Yes. I'll shame you out here.
Having been on your side.
Stephanie is here if you want to ask her any questions. Eight for Sky High. There are three rows of the festival porch. And learn how to put together the festival porch. Very much like a piece of a... A hundred and eighty... Porch, they're already pre-painted. If you're off.
They have the numbers on the back.
Tiny was out there as well, Rob was out there. I want to say this, but I don't know... Occupancy. At first this... Other... All of the same... That we can walk through. I'll consider... All the A B's. And ribbon tape. Forty to maybe six thirty. Some places. And it's not a cost of a grand.
I was, I was thinking the train depot house.
You bit into it.
Um, you said that you have how many pending events? That one?
Uh, right now, I have thirty-five pending events and I have sent out four contracts already this week. Starting to get people confirmed and get money in. The other ones, I'm working on getting them scheduled for tours of the facility so that they know exactly what areas they want to use. I'm putting together quotes and then doing...
That's five more than you said the last time.
It is, it is.
Awesome, thank you.
I was asked this week, when vendor shows are done there, and you may have already answered the email that I forwarded to you.
I did, but I'm happy to address it here.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, the question was in regards to the additional costs for tables and chairs in the event center site. So, for vendor shows, there is that additional cost. So, the concern was that the vendors were having to pay us directly and that is not the case. Our contract is with the event holder. So, the event holder is charged the ten dollars per table, not per day, it's just per the event. And then it's their responsibility to charge the vendors appropriately. However, they want to get money for the ten dollars, that's on the event holder.
But the vendors aren't allowed to bring in their own tables?
Correct. But the new facility, we have brand-new furniture. We're excited to use it. We want to keep it simple and keep everything consistent. But unless if they are doing specialty rentals, which I would expect more for a wedding, we're going to use the furniture that we have purchased.
How much is it per table? Rest?
Ten dollars.
So, for, for a vendor, it's going to be an extra thirty dollars? Well, they usually use three tables. Or do you, are you going to give them three tables?
So, for the event holder, it will be an additional, these three tables, it's an additional thirty dollars. It's then the event holder's responsibility. So, let me use the Rotary Outdoor and Guts.
Because we've been talking all day.
So, if they have forty different vendors and they request forty different tables, say they, a couple of them wanted a couple extra, so they want forty-five tables. I'm charging the Rotary Club for those forty-five tables. And the Rotary, Rotary Club's responsibility to get that money however they want it. I'm not dealing with any of the vendors personally. Other questions?
Good about this, all kicking off.
Me too.
Thank you, Stephanie.
You're welcome. Last Friday, the consolidated DSH area, HCH Company... Bottom line. Cost for... February the second. All of the... Question with RWR. And she's... Over. So, had a job. Supervised by... College and, and... Officer, we're in... Definitely support of it. That's right information. Height information. But he. Was being. RWR. So. Ex and figures. Salted potatoes, barley and. Had a letter and if you guys. Or. We're on top of that.
Interesting, here's from Blanca, the amount of water they're trying to dry out. Could essentially dry up all the wells in Blanca. Not more irrigation in Blanca. At that level, obviously, he's doing. It's a good way to put that picture in there though, everybody.
On their bike rack. Or has their friend out.
Nita?
So just a couple things, at the end of the year. We sent out all the renewals to businesses, we sent over. Items, that includes home-based businesses and storefront businesses. Those are all coming in, we're sending out. Week. Facts that came in today, so we're working on that. Been working with Stephanie for the vendor permits for Sky High. Working with the city subsidized entities. In front of council, in. On their businesses and how they're doing, like corner animal shelters, dairy. So those entities will. For you in the next couple. Funding and zoning, once we get back together, they're kind of still working on it. The two of the members are working on sign code and Airbnb codes. Been working with manual on animal and nuisance codes and. So it should have been crazy busy and.
Nita, one question, if there is a business out there. That service business, I know. Taxes, right? Service business? But if this business sells parts, you have to file taxes, correct? Sees that?
So we don't collect around taxes, so the. At the state, and they pay their taxes quarterly, yearly, however the business do. Their taxes, they pay the state. Then the county submits for the city as well as the county to the state and the state sends it. Our portion. I have never followed up on the taxes and I don't know if our finance department, I don't know if prior finance departments have followed up on it. Followed up on that. I'm not sure how we would regulate because we don't regulate around.
Courses two months. And T D, it doesn't break it out into individuals, does it? Actually. Answer is no. If the county and I actually. Their finance person is. Person, they can't sort. Alamosa had. Let's do. So. Large number. I asked you, because.
You can't pin it down to individual businesses, the only way to pin that down would be to.
I do have. That I work with through. Ask where we had a. If there's something that needs, please let me know and I'll.
Nita?
Mr. Vance. Probably deviated a little bit from my report. A lot new, just kind of doing Sky High and just. City, we're. Trying to do our part to help. We have been fortunate, heard it earlier. Haven't had a lot of snow and really the temperatures are not that cold. Which is normally winterized in times of year. I get a jump on the summer. Other than that. Really just. I'd just like to throw some kudos out first to my crew. Always proud of them, but they have been very gracious and. Change and. Go and progress with Sky High and it's always a, you know. Say. My guys have been really good about dropping what they're doing, run over, taking care of some stuff. Really wanted to shout out to my crew. Happy for the first event we're going to. Of our park specialist. Experience with events with. He kind of knows. You know, protect your bathrooms. That'll just help Stephanie. Her. And then I've got another, one of our techs, one of our water techs. Really very good about being more of a hand. A new building, if something were to break or something. Try to make that first event is. That. Would be to our. Us. Only now, but thanks, the energies and the stuff that is around city hall. Any questions?
I thought I had one, but it left me, so you're good, thank you, Ron. I'll call you if it comes back. Him? Hit guy.
Like I, it's not, I'm second time up here, right?
You're popular.
Mayor Council. I just, I'll quickly go over my report here, I'm probably not as quick as Christian is at this, but I'm just out of practice. You have my written report before you and to summarize my report quickly, I can say Sky High. We've been out there all week, pretty much my entire team, we will be out there all of next week and through the conference. So we're working with the vendors out there to get as much of the AV up, what isn't coming up. We're substituting for until parks come in, so. We feel that that's been real successful, we met with the ag committee this morning and went through some of the technology. And I think we're in good shape. We've set up racks, we've set up cameras, there's something like fourteen of the thirty-two cameras are now live over there. The access points that provide Wi-Fi, fifteen of the twenty-one are already live and online. When you walk in the building, if you've got fillings in your teeth, we like to say you will fill the Wi-Fi in that building, it is strong. And we've got a bunch more coming online Monday morning, so. I challenge anyone to find anywhere in the building they don't get exceptional Wi-Fi. We're very proud of it. Also wanted to message out about CLO, our partner there for our bandwidth there. We were buying a hundred meg of broadband from CLO, which is the equivalent of what we run the entire city on. They have stepped up to the plate, partnered with us, they are opening that channel as wide as they can, which is a gigabit, ten times the speed of what we pay for. So that they can measure how much an event uses. And then work with us to work out an appropriate amount of bandwidth to buy in the future. They're not charging us at all for that, so I really want to say thank you. Well, they're really sponsoring us very well there. Really, Sky High was the majority of my report, I don't have much more for you, any questions for me?
The Sky High project, and you know, you guys being IT and all the new things that happen, has this been like a new, like a really serious challenge or things that? Or is it just kind of like nothing to you?
There is a lot of new stuff to learn at Sky High, everything from room schedulers to. I mean, we run cameras, we don't run thirty cameras in a building, that's something new for us. We don't run twenty-eight access points in a building, city hall and a police department here, I think there's four in this entire building. So to run, you know, practically thirty of them, all cross-connected enterprise level, each one of them capable of carrying some five hundred clients. As they pass off traffic to each other, so as you walk through the building, they carry your traffic all the way through the building. Set up private IDs for vendors, for entertainers, it's a little different, a little challenging.
You guys are doing a good job. So you're having fun?
We've been in a mechanical room for a week. Fun is not the word I would use. But interesting for sure. Challenging.
Appreciate what you guys are doing, very much so.
Thank you, Mr.
We'll go to council committee, city commission and council reports before we go to the. Executive session. Who would like to start? Won't have it tonight?
No.
It'll be a short one.
I don't have anything to.
No, I was going to start with. Jason?
Me either.
Are they? I can't, I can't blow that, four for four, I don't have anything to report.
Spotlight's on you.
All I'm going to tell you is that everybody keep an eye out for your neighbors and. Watch what's going on, because I know there's some. Repitable citizens that really would like to go see Barb, so.
I don't have contracts.
You got paid.
Sounds electronic now.
Yes, electronic now. So just pay attention to your surroundings and watch what's going on, because they are out there, it's warm enough, they're not afraid to be announced. Monty Strong.
Monty Strong. I moved in. Um, it's kind. Higher to their retirement. By. Up to me. Also you're visiting with any. Pay some.
Awesome. Turn out of our regular session.
You need a motion. Need a motion to go into executive session.
Regular session. Motion to go into executive session for the conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B. Regarding a pending litigation, Rome versus City of Montavista, case number two zero one, two zero two one, CB three zero zero three four.
Seconding.
Been moved and seconded to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney. For the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS section twenty-four dash six dash four zero two. four B regarding a pending litigation, Rome versus City of Montavista, case number two zero two one, CV three zero zero three four. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Councilor Foster.
Hi.
Councilor Hock.
Hi.
Councilor Loren.
Hi.
Mayor President Spadola.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carried, go into executive session. I'm going to go grab hold of your quarter.